While following me into order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation following.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Alan Green, LaFleur, Ms. Stravich, Rhindell, Ricks, Warren.
Motion to excuse Counselor Green from tonight's meeting with prior notice. She's out of town.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion made in support. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to approval of minutes for the City Council meeting of June 18th. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion been made and supported. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Being that, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Audience comments on any non-agenda items if anybody would like to address? Mr. Simmons?
Thank you. My name is Ken Simmons. I'm here tonight as Chairman of the Board of Elders for St. Peter's Lutheran Church. We're looking to see how we can serve the community and we decided we want to do a survey of the city of Richmond to find out what the needs are. And so between July 15th and July 29th, our goal is to knock on every door in Richmond, leave a brochure if there's nobody home, but we're going to ask the question, what, how do you see us being of help? Is there someone in the neighborhood who needs help, elderly, disabled? We are a multifaceted ministry. We're looking to serve the community and so we're going to go to door to door to have the residents tell us how we can help them.
Very good. Outstanding.
That's it.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Good luck with that. That's awesome.
Yes. Hopefully you share the results from that with us so that we know.
We'd like to.
Yeah, great. Yeah, great. Very good.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Reese, you're good? Okay, we're moving on. Audience comments on adoption of agenda. Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes, but I did lay another item, corrected version of item number three on the table.
Okay. Everybody notes that. City Council, any changes? Being that a motion to accept the agenda as presented is in order.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion made in support. Any discussion? Being that, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion made and supported. There's no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to items for consideration, which we have eight this evening. The first one being consideration of the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 156-23, text amendment, amendment to change permitted use in Business One and Business Two zoning districts. Mr. City Manager.
Council's scheduled to introduce and give first reading to ordinance 156-23, which would amend the zoning ordinance to allow the B1 local business districts and the B2 downtown districts to have comparable uses. During the discussion on the master plan, the Planning Commission just talked about this and felt it was in everyone's best interest to have the B1 district, which is the local business, which in general is kind of the area along Division Road on the south side of Division, near Richmond Mower and Rental where that used to be, and then a small section out by the water tower. We had as local business that, under the current ordinance, doesn't allow all of the same uses that are allowed in our downtown. As they went through the process for the community master plan, the Planning Commission discussed that really those two zonings should be same as far as uses allowed. And so they held a public hearing previously and discussed it with the Planning Commission and are making the recommendation to the City Council to change the zoning ordinance.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to introduce and give first reading to ordinance 156-23, which amends the land use table to make B1 local business and B2 downtown business zoning districts comparable.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Is there any discussion on this? There's a lot of discussion at the Planning Commission. Troy, would you like to enlighten us at all on some of the discussion? Any of the comments?
The biggest thing is just because of setbacks and where it's noted in the zoning ordinance, instead of combining the two zoning districts, we are proposing to keep them separate. So B1 will still remain local business. It'll just have additional uses that'll be allowed like B2.
Very good. Okay. Councils, any questions, comments? Okay. Reese, any comments?
I just wondered what the difference was between B1 and B2.
What the main difference is?
B1 is our local business district. It's typically the areas along Division Road that don't have buildings right up on the back of sidewalk. So there is a little bit of a setback between the sidewalk and the building. And then our downtown business district, the big difference is we want all the buildings up against the back of sidewalk to create that downtown feel. But as far as uses, B1 right now only allows office, retail, and restaurants without drive-throughs. But there are a lot of other uses that are allowed in our downtown that aren't currently allowed along Division Road. And with the additional traffic on Division, we felt the zoning district kind of is meant for more intensive commercial uses.
Okay, back to the table. If there's nothing else, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number two is consideration of closing BB Street for the community garage sale. Mr. City Manager?
Council's scheduled to consider closing BB Street from Festival Drive to Park Street during the community garage sale. We approved this last year and it worked out well. We have the community garage sale and often vendors are set up on both sides of BB Street in that area, as well as we have the garden walk that day at the Historical Society. So it allows people to kind of walk back and forth across BB a little easier and safer. In addition, last year with the Ride Richmond, our police department assisted the riders from Ride Richmond to get out onto BB Street and go BB down to Division Road and then use Division Road to get to the Trailhead Park on their way out. On their way back, they're all spread out and they kind of know to come back, you know, utilizing kind of traffic laws. But what we thought is this time to actually have our DPW there to kind of pull out the cones and shift traffic like we do when we're working in Division Road in a travel lane and just shift the travel lane, the westbound travel lane for the time period where the bikers are on their way out and have that travel lane shifted into the center turn lane. So those are the two things being requested for Saturday, July 28th.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the closure of BB Street from Park Street to Festival Drive on Saturday, July 28th, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. and then, and the shifting of the westbound lane of Division Road in conjunction with Ride Richmond.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Is there any discussion on this? Seems as though it's going to be a little more organized than what it was last year, the first year. So it's much safer, I believe, for the bike riders.
Yes.
Anything else, guys? Audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number three, consideration of Richmond Rummage Relic Sale Extension of Street Closure Times. Mr. City Manager?
Council's scheduled to consider lengthening the approved closure of one block of Monroe Street from Main to Parker in conjunction with the Richmond Rummage and Relic Sale on Saturday, July 28th. Last January, Council approved that block being closed starting on Saturday morning. But with looking at how things worked with their April event, we realized trying to get all of the vendors into that block in a timely manner on that morning kind of proved a little bit of a challenge. So Kathy from My Junk Teaks who runs the vintage market that weekend had asked if we could close Monroe Street on Friday, July 27th at 5:00 p.m. to allow some of the vendors to come in and set up that night. That'll make the congestion Saturday morning easier. Also, we've been working with our EDC to try and get the farmer market started and although we have a lot of interest from farmers, they seem reluctant to be the first one to sign on and come out and be there. And so we're gonna, we have a couple of the smaller vendors, such as like a woman that puts mixed pickles and one that grows herbs. One of them will also have some small produce later in the summer. So we're going to target July 28th as the start of the farm market, even if we don't have quite all of the farmers, just to kind of show to them that we can get it up and running and make it work.
Note a type O on the recommended motion that should be Parker instead of Park.
Oh, shoot. Yep. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Michigan Junk Teaks' request to close Monroe Street from Main to Parker and the Northern Third of the municipal parking lot for the Richmond Rummage and Relic Event on Friday, July 27th at 5:00 p.m. through Saturday, July 28th at 5:00 p.m.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Is there any discussion?
You just gotta let those homeowners on that street know that affected.
Yes, yep. And she's done that in the past, but she'll have to do that, that it's closed Friday night.
Yeah. Okay. Any audience comment? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We wish them good weather. Item number four is consideration of Good Old Days Building Request. Mr. City Manager?
Council's scheduled to consider approving a request from the Richmond area Good Old Days Festival to build a building near the spectator entrance of the demolition derby pit. The building would be a combination ticket booth and storage building and would be approximately 16 feet by 30 feet. I did provide a map. There's kind of essentially three infrastructure improvements that the festival is proposing to do this summer. The main one that's in front of you tonight is the building, which again would kind of be a permanent ticket booth. Right now, they have one that they take out there during the festival. And this would serve both as the ticket booth and as a storage. As we all know, we have definite storage needs over in the park and so that will be helpful. The other item is that there was power at a pole at the northwestern section of the festival field and the festival will be taking that power underground over to this building. And then also, they'll be putting in a permanent dance floor in concrete that would be in the area where the current dance floor is, but would be a concrete dance floor.
Thank you. Is there a motion before discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the request from the Richmond area Good Old Days Committee to build.
To build.
To build a 16 by 30 foot building at the entrance to the demolition derby area. Support.
Motion made and supported. Any discussion?
Just one thing on the concrete pad. It's going to be six inches thick, not six feet thick. We're not digging real deep. That's a lot of concrete.
Needing another little.
We got volunteers.
I was told you would be digging that yourself, Rob. Man. Yeah, sorry.
Stretching our limits.
Any other comments, questions?
I'd have a question too. Is it going to be like at ground level, this dance floor?
The dance floor will be a little bit higher than.
Little bit higher, okay. I just don't want people to be a trip hazard or something out there.
It could be. It very well could be.
There's not the festival going on.
Yeah, because, yeah, it very well could be. You can't have it low enough where it could flood, you know, when we get those 300-year rains or what they call them. It seems like we get them during Good Old Days every once in a while. But it is going to be a little bit raised. But, you know, eventually, I wouldn't doubt, we'll probably add more of the, can't think what the.
Millings.
The millings. We'll probably be adding more of the millings to that area anyhow.
That's true.
And one of the conversations we've had is the possibility in the future of actually building the pavilion.
Right.
Which we would just add to the cement that is already going to be there and then that could possibly turn into not only a pavilion, but it could turn into a skating, ice skating rink. So we've had that conversation. So where we're going to put this is normally where the dance floor is. The reason we can't do a wooden dance floor anymore is because we put that together with screws and since we put the millings in there, the shoes of the dancers pick up the millings, grind it into the heads of the screws and we can't get them out. So we pretty much, we didn't destroy the dance floor, but came real close just trying to get it apart. So we knew we couldn't do that any longer and we have some very nice people in the community are going to volunteer their time to do the work there, so.
And then talking with the concrete guys that are volunteering, they're talking about even feathering the millings into the building so it won't be such a trip hazard. So they already kind of been thinking about that a little bit too, Mike.
It sounds like there'd be extra millings when they pull that out anyway.
Oh, yeah. There's going to be quite a bit of millings.
Yeah, they'll be able to feather that in then.
Oh, yeah.
Good.
We just don't want to create holes in the existing. We don't want to build it all up and trap water and the whole idea was we were trapping water for 53 years. We finally are away from that, so. But anyhow, yeah, we're going to try to work that all out. Anything else? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Item number five, consideration of board appointments.
Council's scheduled to consider making board appointments to the Cable Commission, the EDC, Library, Planning Commission, and Tifa. Cable TV, we've received the applications from Tom Kraus and Carolyn Pryor. For EDC, when we appointed Danielle Lee, her, the term that she was filling expired within a month or so, or I guess a couple months of when Council approved her so. At that time, Council and administration recognized we were just going to bring forward her application again. The Library Board, Jennifer Haas, Denise Robson, and Alana Stump have all sent in their apps. Planning Commission, George Frank returned his application and for Tifa, Matthew Ball and Dennis LaFleur have all turned theirs and they're all reappointments.
Thank you, sir. We'll start off with the Cable TV Committee. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Tom Kraus to the Cable TV Committee for a three-year term with an expiration date of June 30th, 2021.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion? I think we can probably save our discussion for all of this at the end. They've all done a great job and I think we're delighted that they've all decided to come back and continue to work with us. So we've got a lot of them to do, so this could take a long time if we comment on each and every one of them. Was there support on that?
Yes. Dennis.
Dennis, okay. Any, any other comments? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have one more appointment for the Cable TV.
I'll make a motion to appoint, reappoint Carolyn Pryor to the Cable TV Committee for a three-year term with expiration date of June 30th, 2021.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any other discussion? Reese? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. I would ask that you would confirm my appointment of Danielle Lee to the EDC for a six-year term. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Danielle Lee to the Economic Development Corporation for a six-year term, six-year term with an expiration date of July 1st, 2024.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion? Reese? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have a seat on the Library Board. We have three seats on the Library Board open. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of Jennifer Haas to the Library Board for a two-year term with expiration date of June 30th, 2020.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Is there any other discussion? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have another Library Board seat. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to reappoint Alana Stump to the Library Board for a two-year term with an expiration date of June 30th, 2020.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have one more reappointment to the Library Board.
I make a motion to reappoint Denise Robson to the Library Board for a two-year term with an expiration date of June 30th, 2020.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. I would ask that you would confirm my appointment of, reappointment of George Frank to the Planning Commission. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to confirm the mayor's reappointment of George Frank to the Planning Commission for a three-year term with expiration date of June 30th, 2021.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Is there any discussion? Reese? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. I would also ask that you would confirm my reappointment of Dennis LaFleur to the Tifa Board.
I make a motion to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Dennis LaFleur to the Tifa for a four-year, four-year term with an expiration date of June 30th, 2022.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Any discussion on this?
What do you know about that guy?
I'm not too sure about him. He'd be shady. Reese, you don't want to say anything about Dennis? No support? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. I would ask that you would also confirm my appointment, or reappointment of Matthew Ball to the Tifa for a four-year term. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Matthew Ball to the Tifa for a four-year term with the expiration date of June 30th, 2022.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Outstanding. What do we have there? We had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine positions, nine returnees. They've done a great job. Some of them have been on for over 20 years. Some have just been on, like we talked about, one of them just filled a spot here this last few months for us. But everybody's done a great job, so it's, I'm glad they're all back and congratulations to all of them. Look forward to working with them again with the City Council. Okay, item number six is consideration of the purchase of a lawnmower for cemetery maintenance. Mr. City Manager?
In this year's budget, Jim included funds in our cemetery budget for the purchase of a 48-inch zero-turn lawnmower for the cemetery. If approved, this will replace the city's 2006 52-inch front-runner mower. The 48-inch, lieu of the 52, allows us to kind of handle areas around the headstones, particularly in the older section, better. So this is the same unit that we purchased last year from Zimmer's, who were the low bidder and were the low bid again this year. And we've been very satisfied with the unit that we purchased last year.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to authorize $6,159 for the purchase of an X mark radius from Zimmer Sales and Services with the expense charged to the appropriate line item equipment acquisition cemetery fund.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Low bidder by about $1,000, so.
Great savings.
Yes. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number seven is consideration of bid award, walking path, and City Hall crack sealing and seal coating. Mr. City Manager?
The fiscal year 1819 budget includes funds to both crack seal and seal coat, the bike path, hike bike path in BB Park and the tight track in BB Park, and then also the parking lot here at City Hall. Jim has evaluated both areas. Feels by doing this, we'll extend the life and be able to set aside some funds to eventually redo the whole city parking lot here. But there's areas that if we crack seal and then seal coat here, we'll be able to make it through. Funds, I think, sorry. There was quite a bit of funds budgeted. The bids came in low and so there's $5,325 for the general fund to do the work here at the parking lot and then $1,300 was the bid for the parks and rec areas.
Thank you. Is there a motion before discussion?
I'll make a motion to authorize J&amp;J Seal Coating to proceed with the crack sealing and seal coating of BB, BB Park, hike bike path, tight track, the City Hall parking lot in the amount of $6,670 with the expenses charged, appropriate line item, general fund, building and grounds, parks and recreation parks.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion?
It's nice to see everything's being maintained and make things last.
I noticed it said that it's not going to do certain things. I know, being over there quite a bit with my grandkids this fall, or this fall, this spring, summer, with literally a lot of bad spots out there.
Yes, and he's actually evaluating them. We're probably going to come back with more patching and actually do an actual patch.
Oh, okay.
Yep, yep. Yeah, there's, there's certain areas that this is going to be applicable where it's not too bad.
Yes.
But then there's some areas that it's really bad that it's going to be part of a patching contract.
Okay, okay.
Where it's just, you know, mill out and completely redo. Because, yeah, there's, there's some areas that are too bad for this particular process and so, yeah, you'll notice later on that there's, there's some additional work.
Okay, good, good, good.
Yeah, it was nice to see too that even though the business is local, they've done a lot of local work here, so, in the community. So that's good to see.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number eight is consideration of City Hall and Community Center lighting upgrades. Mr. City Manager?
The fiscal, fiscal year 1819 budget includes $23,400 for the replacement of the fluorescent light fixtures, both here at City Hall and over at the Community Center. Two years ago, we did a similar project at the library that's worked well and I think we're experiencing about a 37% reduction in our utility usage over there. As a reminder, here at City Hall and Police Post, areas such as this room that were renovated when we moved over here, these are LED lights that were in this room, but areas such as like the community room next door that we didn't touch as part of the renovations, didn't, they still have the old fluorescent bulbs. And so it's kind of a combination in this building. Some areas will get all the lights replaced and there's a retrofit kit that our DPW is Um, and there's a retrofit kit that our DPW is able to install. They did the work at the, um, library and, and so we're confident that they're able to do the, do the work, uh, over the winter and then, um, or even this fall. And then, uh, we'll purchase them through Madison Electric. And Madison Electric has, uh, a lot of experience in doing these projects and they've, uh, volunteered to actually fill out all of the paperwork through Edison to get the rebates.
Good, great. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to authorize the expense of $11,292 for the purchase of two-by-two and two-by-four retrofit kits from Madison Electric with the expense charged to the appropriate light items, general fund, sanitary sewer, water, Tifa, and parks and recs funds.
Support.
Which been made and supported. Any discussion? Comments? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion does pass. Move on to city manager's comments, sir.
Uh, I was in discussion and in contact with MDOT today. Uh, they're trying to pin down their contractor and when they'll be back in town to handle the micro-surfacing and complete that project, uh, the state project of, uh, resurfacing M19. Uh, they've indicated that they believe their contract will be in the week of July 23rd. Um, again, we expressed our concerns over, uh, the striping, uh, to Drew Buckner, our, uh, TSE director. And that's all I have.
You're being very polite, Mr. City Manager. I think the city manager was very upset, uh, with MDOT again, as I am and all of us should be. We had a promise after all these meetings that they would be here the, the end of June, the last week or two of June and get this thing going. And, uh, sadly, you know, again, they're, they're delaying another month now. So, uh, I, I plan on contacting my state, uh, representatives because this is ridiculous, uh, for us to have to have our roads look like this. People are laughing at what's going on out there and we had absolutely nothing to do with it, but it reflects on our community. Evidently, MDOT and the state of Michigan doesn't really care. So I'll be very polite, as polite as I can too. Dennis?
Oh, I just, uh, thanks for the reappointment to Tifa. Appreciate the support.
Absolutely. Enjoy you being on there. I'm going to wait for you, Michael.
Nothing.
John?
Nothing.
Emily?
Nothing, thank you.
Michael?
Yes, um, I, I went to the ribbon cutting for the Burger King. It was a very nice event, uh, and I wanted to, uh, congratulate or give hats off to the administration because there were some comments from the store manager and then the corporate staff that was there of how easy it was to work with our city. They're doing some stuff on southwest of here, down more towards Detroit and running into a lot of issues with the city. So they, they were very acknowledgement of, gave acknowledgement of how well things went here when they were trying to put that up.
Yeah, even as tough as these two guys are, they, their difference is they know what they're doing and they know what the expectations are and they make it very clear.
Yep, yes, they had good, good things about Troy and, and John Moore and all city staff and building inspector and everything, so.
Great, great. Thanks for being there this weekend. Okay, uh, we'll go to the calendar. Um, we're in July. Um, again, we will note that the city council meets at 6 o'clock. The, the city calendar says 7 o'clock. It was a typo. But in the months of July and August, we definitely meet at 6:00 PM instead of 7:00 PM. The rec board will not be meeting tomorrow. I believe they are going to meet on the 10th.
10th, correct.
Yes, at 7 o'clock, right here at city hall. Um, of course, the 4th is this Wednesday and all of our buildings will be shut down except for our police department. And, uh, you know, I had a question came up. Uh, somebody, uh, had an emergency and they didn't know who to contact. Call our police department. They will get in contact with whoever they have to.
They will.
This was a water leak and they didn't know who to call and I said 727-4000.
Yep, yep.
You got a problem in the city of Richmond, anytime of day, just call our dispatch. It's 24 hours a day and they'll get ahold of the right people. Um, we have a cable commission meeting on the 10th at 7 o'clock also here at the city hall, the 12th at 7 o'clock is the planning commission meeting. Uh, no BZA?
No.
Okay? And, uh, two weeks, uh, from tonight, we will have the 6 o'clock city council meeting and immediately following that council meeting, we will have the quarterly workshop meeting, uh, both certainly open to the public. Uh, don't forget, uh, on the 19th, which is the third Thursday of July, there will be our next summer concert at 7 o'clock in the pavilion at BB Park. Another new thing that the Parks and Recreation is going to be doing, um, there is a flyer that's going around, the, uh, 50th, it's our 50th anniversary of our pool. They are going to try some night swims on July 27th, August 10th, and August 24th. Uh, the pool normally, I believe, closes at about 8 o'clock nor, on a normal evening. Uh, they are going to, uh, have this night swim till 10:00 PM and it's $3 and pool passes will be, uh, allowed for that. And there will be a s- a special, uh, pool weekend, which is the last weekend the pool will be open, which will be the end of August, on August 25th and, which is a Saturday, and Sunday, August 26th, from 1 to 5, um, there will be swimming. Uh, again, a $3 entry fee. Pool passes will be, uh, allowed. Um, there'll be games and prizes and lots of fun. Uh, that's the last weekend of our community pool and the celebration of the 50th anniversary of the pool. Is there anything else that we need to add to the calendar? Got a lot of things coming up in July here. Happy 4th to everybody. Have a safe one. We move on. Is there any other business of the city council this evening? If not, motion to adjourn would be in order.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Which been made and supported. There is no discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion passes. Thanks for being with us.